April, it may start a little late today because everybody in the auditor's office has influenza.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said it may start a little late today because everybody in the auditor's office has influenza, so Ben's gonna get the record thing going and Kim's gonna take notes.
Oh my gosh.
I know, it has not, this has not been a good season for people.
No, it hasn't.
Okay, and I'm up here with my grandson. He wasn't feeling good. Nope, it's that one, it's this one, it's this lit. There you go. So, yeah.
They've had it here too, so.
Yeah, it's, he's got the crud and it's, they, they tested him for everything possible, but they said it was just viral, virus, but man, he was spiking fevers and all that good stuff.
I was gonna say, it's our little ones around here that are sick. Everybody's little ones are sick, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, he's eighteen months, so. Yep, alright, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna go back on mute just in case something happens.
Hey, Sandy.
Sandy.
You hear Sandy?
Yes, I can, I just had to get the unmute on.
Well.
Everybody wants to look in.
Showed us how to turn it on, so.
It's called the young, uh, knowledge.
The, the young computer.
Job, Matt, we're proud of you.
Did we get, we know if it's recording?
It's, when I clicked on it, said it was recording.
Alright, well, we might just, we'll start, it's just those three events coming. Alright, let's start with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
My hazmat suit.
Not a bad idea. Welcome everyone, and I call the meeting to order. Hopefully. Um, we have a couple of things that, uh, that are on the agenda that we are going to scratch. Um, down at the bottom, we have the resolution approve, approving a twenty eighty agreement with Central Iowa Juvenile Detention. Um, we're scratching that because that is still a mess down in Eldora, and until they get it straightened down there, we're not approving any agreement here, so. Uh, the next one is the work session with Allison Hauser, um, that's also being scratched until a later date. And then we have a budget work session that we were scheduled to have, and that's also all. So, as far as we know, everything on the top side is still in order, so I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended, amended.
I'll make that motion to approve his agenda, but one thing I wanted to make clear is that Al, that, that Al, with Allison Hauser, that has nothing to do with Rolling Hills.
Okay.
Yep, yep, I just wanted to make sure everybody realizes that has nothing to do with Rolling Hills.
I will second it. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended, amended agenda, so, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Minutes from January twentieth.
Um, they look okay.
Alright.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Uh, general public concerns, anybody?
There we go.
Welcome.
Hi, guys.
How are you?
Ladies. Uh, everybody know me?
I just state your name so everybody knows. What was that again?
Ron Friedolson.
Ron Friedolson. Own a piece of property out there, section twenty eight of Relling Township.
Just east of Relling, unblacked up there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Scouters strip it down two hundred foot wide through the middle of it, from the east border to the west. The county claims they own.
Is that the trail?
Are you getting banned from rolling trucks?
Right.
You guys familiar with Supreme Court ruling US twelve dash eleven seventy-three?
Twelve, eleven? No, I'm not.
It's a Supreme Court ruling that took your Rails to Trails Act and chewed out the window on an eight to one vote. The one dissenting vote was sort of my ear, and her only complaint about throwing it out was the fact that it may cost the government hundreds of millions of dollars to correct this injustice. Now, being Rails to Trails Act is out, I had to go back, excuse me, I'm nervous as a cow about the cat. The, I have to go back to, it's proceeding stated April of eighteen eighty-one.
Wow, wow.
Which was condemnation procedures where they took the property from the landowner to time to use as a railroad. In the proceedings, one of the provisions, if the railroad is not constructed or moved to a different location, or if ever abandoned and ceases to operate on this land, land will revert to the said grantor. The guy that owned the ground at the time. So on this basis, I reclaimed this property before and the county attorney offered to put me in jail and find me a whole bunch of money if I didn't take my sign down. I took my sign down, but I never relinked the ownership of that property. Now come spring, when the frost goes out and I can set posts, I intend to fence off both ends of that two hundred foot strip that my property lines. And you people have no legal basis to make me take that fence down.
Oh, and I don't know that that's true.
I have a legal basis that says it's my property, the Supreme Court ruling. Thank you.
Could we have a copy of your notes? I mean, I just.
Of my notes?
Well, the, the numbers, I guess I'm.
Oh, sure, well, it's, uh, yeah.
I mean, we can run a copy of that, that way we at least make sure that.
You want a copy of the Treasury?
If you, do you have it? I'm sure we have it upstairs.
Well, if you got it, that's fine, otherwise I got it.
This would be an old version of what, what are they fighting over now with the, the pipelines and the.
So, I know.
Eminem domain.
Sobe and them were successful in their claiming of the old railroad trail south of Humboldt on that spur line. But that was decades ago, shortly after the rail with.
I also have a letter, excuse me. Also have a letter from our Department of Justice, Attorney General's Office. It is saying that the lower courts have upheld the federal law, and then it says, unless the Supreme Court overturns the decision of the lower courts, the railroad will be able to continue to sell right away, and the Supreme Court did overturn that. Lower court.
So, did you originally own the ground when the railroad came through?
Did I originally own it? No, I'm a successor to the original owner.
Well, I, I guess this is something that I had no clue of, and all we can do is pass it on. But I'm sure that would make the, the Conservation Board a little.
I would like to let you guys know that what my intentions are.
Their trails.
You won't be surprised when I bring it on.
I'm good. I would give it to the county.
I think that's where it's headed.
Sure, it's gonna end up on the court.
Well, we appreciate your stopping in and giving us a heads up for it. And we'll pass it upstairs and see where it goes from there.
Did you want these back? I mean, look, if these people look at them quick or no?
I don't have another copy of that, I would like to have that back.
It's twenty fourteen, the date on that one.
Yeah, I just found out about that March of last year. And you cannot, a person like me cannot get legal assistance in Humboldt or any of the surrounding counties because these lawyers don't wanna ruffle feathers and offend their high dollar client.
East of Livermore, there's a stub and a railroad out there at the full center of mine, but I think they, they abandoned it, they come to the county, and I think we abandoned that piece from the road, that dead end road that goes back there east, full department and now, but I'm not sure how that all came about.
Sorry for making you do all work.
Yeah, I did, I mean, um, it's happened since I've been, oh, I've been here like twenty-six.
Which rail?
There's an old railroad stub used to go out west of.
Yeah.
Livermore. Uh, you go up, up the hill and go backward, Collins owns that.
The one that went down to Arnold and that way?
A.J. Burdys goes by his house, goes kitty cornered out through there.
Yeah.
Passed about three quarters of a mile in, it starts there and it went on out. I used to deer hunt the end of it, 'cause it just stopped.
So, a lot of those, uh, on the one that runs through Livermore, that rail was abandoned, I understand, you know, the trust will fire decades or century ago where Clark has both sides of the ground on that now. Um, I guess I'm not sure.
Bob Collins owned it, we sold the poles, that strip so they could graze cattle and whatever. But that's the only piece that I know has ever been used for anything but railroad.
So, Ron, you're just.
You're talking about was abandoned.
Re, this is what your comment was?
Trail, exactly.
Exactly.
Your intentions are to put fence posts across the, the trail and close it off with a fence? So people won't go through the, I'm just asking, I wanted to make sure I heard that. Okay?
Well, as I'm concerned, and as far as the Supreme Court and these procedures of eighteen eighty-one is concerned, that is my property. Consecutors of eighteen eighty one is concerned, that is my property and I will keep it all over.
Okay, I'm just asking the. Is there, is there a reason why?
County deeds that property back to me. We maybe open the discussion about it being used.
Okay, why don't you like people going across it?
Well, where do you wanna start from? People standing on the railroad trestle south of my house looking on my strip over. Bicycles, motorcycles, quads, side by side, horses. Snowmobiles, cars, hiccups. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I'm I'm just wanting to make sure that we're aware because.
Sure.
I think Todd will be in here. All right, thank you for that and we'll, I'm assuming we'll be back in touch.
I hope so.
All right, Ben. Morning.
Morning. So I'm gonna end up tabling mine, I had adopted existing zoning map and planning and zoning commissioner. What I had received last Thursday was supposed to be. A. So these were our original zoning maps, I mean, they were printed basically on a Doc Matrix. Style printer in the early nineties, late eighties. And they've been our official adopted zoning maps ever since. We tasked Midas with digitizing those maps and coming up with. A. Better organized app, something in color that shows the individual parcels, things like that. The one that was presented to us had a couple of. Small corrections. That are different versus the one that we had looked at a few years ago and thought everything was in place, so. I need to table it and take it back to Stacy and double check a couple of those parcels and then my guess is. I think the the way that you legally go through this is I'll talk to my planning and zoning board tonight. At our five o'clock meeting. And then I'll bring it to the board for official adoption. So.
So there's a meeting at five o'clock?
There will be a meeting tonight at five o'clock for planning and zoning.
Out at your.
Out at our office, we're we're in the process, as you guys know, of trying to, um. Do some rewrites and some updates, we've gotten through the first. Four chapters, I think there's two chapters left, they need some clarification from. Planning and zoning board before they proceed on the final two chapters. Uh, as far as, uh, future use maps and what we're. If if we're still pointing in the same direction, so, um, five o'clock tonight, we'll have that meeting.
So they would vote. For updating, then it would be brought back to this board too.
Yep, so like I said, what Midas was originally tasked with was just digitizing.
Fair enough to pull up there.
So.
Well, those would be a lot easier to follow.
Thank you.
And know where you're at as opposed to out in the middle of nowhere with those, so. We have a motion.
I'll second it.
In a second to table Ben's, uh. Planning and zoning adoption of that, so hopefully in the next week or so, we will be able to bring that back and. Update that. All in favor?
I. I.
I. All eyes, all right, thanks, anything else, Ben?
Uh, not officially.
Good.
Didn't have this back.
You don't want those?
No.
Well, nine o'clock is actually the official time set for the DD. Eighty and I don't, I'm a, I'm don't know for sure is. Uh, the contractor coming or someone from the contractor? I would assume, I don't wanna start before.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock. We could sit and listen to the highlights of the news from KHPT. Matt, you got any updates for us?
We can go down and do the resolution. Setting the. The Rutland Dam sale to the city of Rutland. If Todd's eyes see you're here. Are you ready for that?
Ready to talk about that.
Okay.
Has agreed to purchase the Rutland Dam and some adjacent property. That lies to the, I guess I call it the north, um, a lot of that area. It already been using as part of their campground and park anyway, excuse me. Um, so. Think it's a. More of a formality or a paperwork type of a transfer, at least the fat area than than anything. Um, I think you should have a copy of that resolution. In front of you, I don't know if you have questions for me, um. There's several steps, I guess, that you have to go through. Resolution day and there's supposed to be a public, have a public hearing and. Then come back with another resolution, so. A lot of hoops to jump through to, I guess, uh, or something that should be.
How big an area is the land attached to the dam?
Two point four two acres is what I have.
Okay.
And that's owned by the county?
Correct.
So we don't have to worry about somebody coming and saying that.
I verify that.
Okay, I'm just checking.
No, no, that's a great question, Bruce.
I wanna make sure that we don't give somebody's land away and then we end up with somebody.
Well, I went back and looked through the transfer agreement, um, and have a legal description and all that. Read and roll and it's pretty elaborate, the third oak tree from the. Way back, so that's about a page long. I'm pretty sure we're on the right track.
Okay, and I sent Trish a message just to make, cause I wasn't sure what the timeframe was, we have to have it published, then.
At least four days before the public hearing, but not more than twenty is my understanding. Alright.
So she said not before ten and not after twenty for the publication. And Todd will also know, so there you go.
Yep, so I guess when Trish gets back, um, I'll be gone next week, but maybe on the tenth, I think. Would be a good date to try to do that.
So you don't wanna set the hearing or set the date now or what? You wanna wait until she comes back? What are your, what are your wishes?
I think you'd be safe setting that's tent, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Disagree?
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
I'm not gonna argue with you, but I'd like to keep things kind of.
Keep it rolling.
Today's the twenty seventh, so that's your publication deadline is today.
Okay.
So you have to make sure it gets in the newspaper.
Today.
Well, that would have to be in by. Was it ten o'clock?
Todd just said this, change it to the seventeenth.
Okay.
No, I appreciate that, Angelique.
I'm sorry.
I'd rather do that than we get down there, one o'clock and they said, well, the.
Yeah.
Print time was ten.
Yeah.
So does anybody wanna make a motion on those?
I'll make that motion to set the meeting for February seventeenth at nine o'clock. Does that sound good?
Go with nine o'clock.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second for nine AM.
For a public hearing.
Public hearing. On the tenth? That would I? Seventeenth there, screwed you up.
Court opens closed on the, on the seventeen, oh, no, it's.
President's Day, okay, thank you. I forgot about that, okay.
Okay, well. Now do you wanna, another day?
Twenty fourth.
The twenty fourth?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the city.
Good thing we didn't vote.
Rutland, I know, for February twenty fourth.
You still wanna go at nine?
Nine AM.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to now go to the twenty fourth at nine AM. All those in favor?
I.
I.
We have all eyes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Do we have to do the resolution then too?
I would think so, yes.
Then that resolution will be, uh, twenty twenty five. Uh, oh, one dash twenty seven dash one. And that is for the sale and the property. As explained in your document, Todd. All right. That is a roll call vote. So we'll start out with, uh, Sandy.
I.
Uh, Rick's not here, Rasmussen?
I.
Uh, Carpenter?
I.
And I guess Reimers is, and I, can I vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. Um, and Rick will, wasn't here, so all eyes. So Todd, are you gonna take this down to, uh, I mean, I can take this down there, I don't know how, I can call San, uh, Trish.
Yeah, cause we have until, we have a week to kinda get things ironed out, make sure we have everything ordered.
No, that that's fine.
Have you talked to Trish? She'll hopefully be back.
She shares his bag, I would think.
Well, she answered my text a little bit ago when I asked her. How we turn this thing on, cause none of us knew how to.
Well, honestly, Bruce, unless you have a burning desire to take full by. Happy to let you.
I'm ready to pass it off, if Rick walks through that door now, I'd strip the whole.
Week won't do.
Is there still a?
Yeah, but you gotta have.
Thing or whatever the.
On Thursday. Right, right?
This year?
Yeah.
You think I might not even?
Need to get it in. Today, right?
No, we we moved it back a week, so we can do it when Trish comes back, they can get it.
Get it from.
Okay.
Gonna get it from everybody else.
So.
Was it table?
Yeah.
So what, are they tabling it? No.
No, I don't, who's Jeff Rose? Who's Jeff Rose?
I don't know.
You're on.
Please mute your, your phone, please.
Thank you.
I'll try not to bug you again.
No, we appreciate it.
No, you're good, you're good, Linda.
So with that, I think that's all we need, I can, I can sign this and. Or sign yours or whoever's and we'll, uh, leave it on the counter in there and. If Trish has any problems, I'm sure she'll reach back out to us. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think so.
I'll probably call you here in a little bit. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we still have, well, we have a couple of minutes, so we can go to, uh, any committee reports and. I guess I got my book down here.
So is Doyle Construction, there's two people on that are not, that I, Jeff Rose and Bree Erks. Erks.
Oh, nobody said anything whether they were.
Are they with, are they with Doyle Construction?
No, hi Sandy, this is Bree Erskine with Humboldt Wind and RWE.
Oh, Bree, I'm sorry, I should know your name by now, I apologize.
No, that's okay, my last name probably threw you, no problem.
It did.
It's good to see you not in a mask, by the way, it's so good to hear your voice, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
And then I don't know who Jeff Rose is, who's Jeff Rose?
This is Scott Brunswick, I'm actually on Jeff Rose's computer, I'm with Jacobson Westergaard.
Okay, okay, okay.
Apologize for the mute, the audio.
You're good, I just, we just wanted to make sure we had everybody figured out.
All right, well, we still have a couple of minutes before. Sandy, do you have anything for, uh, last week? Excuse me.
I was on mute, um, let's see, on the, I had, um, on the twenty first, I had Humboldt. Um, County Oxyoid Alcohol Coalition, also Humboldt Food Pantry. Um, on the twenty second, I had de categorization and that was an interesting meeting, all three of us were new board members. And. I was, and they moved kitty cat to that, but I couldn't go to that, cause I went to, hang on, I'll give it to you in a minute, um, sorry, you guys. And then that's it, okay.
Can you let us know when the food pantry, when we need help with that, can you let us know?
Sure, um. The, um, one is the food pantry, this is what kinda what's con confusing. The Food Bank of Iowa, that is totally separate from the food pantry. So the food bank is the mobile, the mobile one out at the, um. Fairgrounds. And then the food pantry is what is the ministerial. We broke, I don't know how you wanna say, but it was the ministerial, but then we became the food pantry board, it's very confusing, I'm catching on now. Is that right, Bruce, do I have that right?
Yes, you are correct, the food, uh, mobile food pantry should be, it's the second Thursday. So it'll be February. One, it should be the thirteenth and it should be at four o'clock in the afternoon and starts at four thirty.
Yeah, is it every month, Bruce?
Every other.
Yeah, that's what I thought, every other month, that's what I thought, okay.
It's at the fairgrounds, at the, uh. Whatever the west building is there, follow the line of traffic that usually starts lining up about one.
You thought it'd be nice to help out?
Yeah.
You got anything, Bob?
I do not, no. My week was empty.
Mike? All right, I had, uh, Edmo Finance Meeting on one o'clock. On Zoom on Tuesday, the twenty first. And then Friday, the morning at ten o'clock in the morning, I had the juvenile detention meeting. I zoomed, um, down in Eldora. And that's why we. Took out the resolution for the twenty eighty agreements, because they still haven't got all of that stuff put together and put. To bed, so. Long story short, we aren't adopting the twenty eighty when we don't have a. The reading of how it's gonna be, so. Anyway, with that.
Oh, I forgot to say my de cap meeting was in Webster City, I forgot to say that.
Okay.
Everything else was in Humboldt.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to go into drainage.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to go into drainage at nine oh two, all in favor, I?
I.
I.
Pose same sign, we're now in drainage. So now you have to do this. As a separate. No. Okay. All right. With that, we have Colin in attendance and I don't remember who the other, who was your other?
Uh, Scott, I think they're just listening.
They're listening, all right. They're critiquing you or what?
Yeah, maybe.
So this all has to do with eighty over here, the crossover from the street through the park. Licking.
Yep.
And. Who is gonna be in charge of repairing the leak, so.
Yeah, so I guess I'll just kinda give some of the backdrop, we had. We had met a few weeks ago when it became, we became aware that there was a leak going on, yeah. City came in and. City came in, and it was the same day we had the declassification hearing. Um and we talked about what to do, and basically, you know, being there was a a. A chance, it looked like it could be related to the project, the location that was marked out was right near um. Where it had been crossed with this tile project, and so. Uh we had Doyle Construction come back, they were the ones that had done the the tile work. And I had expected them to be here, but I guess they're not um coming, um. So that was on Monday, and then Thursday. Thursday, it it was really cold kinda, and then it warmed up a little bit, and then on Thursday, they came up. And and I did come over, one one point on that, I'll get through everything, but. I know we had kinda planned on having a different, the guy who was did the inspection, would have been a cheaper billable rate than mine. His fiance was expecting um to deliver a baby any day, so he didn't really wanna. Get too far away from home, um so I ended up coming instead, and that's, I mean. We're just gonna take the difference between our billable rates off the, off our engineering bill. Uh so just wanna point that out, but um so then. Basically, the Doyle Construction came up and located the leak. And found that it was, it was locate, it was right in the trench of the, of the tile project, so where. Where the tile crossed over and they, they dug a trench, um that's where the leak was located. Um I think. You know, when we were out there, there was thought and that maybe the water main froze. There's a big box covert that we put in, or box called, box intake. Manhole intake on the south side of that intersection, that we put in as part of the project, um. And there's Eric.
There he is.
Construction.
Thank you.
Uh so there was, there was thought at the time, we're trying to figure out, you know, what. What maybe happened here, cuz obviously that matters, and one of the. Obviously, the reason, one of the big reasons why Doyle Construction was brought back is if it's. Something under the, under the contract for the, for the drainage tile project, there is a one-year warranty period.
Right.
And so that started, you know, whenever we had the completion hearing, which I think maybe was in October or something like that, what's that?
October seventh.
October seventh, so one, a one-year warranty period from that, um. So if it was something under the contract that the contractor messed up. Um did something negligent, did some poor workmanship. Uh that's something that could be considered a a warranty claim. Um and so anyways, we're, we're out there and. Part of, part of my job, obviously, is to try out to my best ability to figure out wh- what caused it.
Right.
Because when you have a contractor come in, they're gonna. They're gonna accrue expense, and so is it, is it a warranty claim that the contractor just has to? You know, it basically do it at no cost, or is it something? Like, if if we found, if we've ended up finding the leak and it was outside the trench and really had nothing to do with the project. You know, we had talked about that at that meeting, that the city acknowledged that if it. Had no relation to the project, then that would be their cost, it needed to be fixed anyways. And so that was kinda the second possibility. And then the third possibility is that the drainage district would pay for it. And if you've read any of the, the stuff, that's kinda the conclusion that I came to, or my recommendation. Uh to the board, and really, kinda the thought process behind that is that. And I'm kinda jumping around here, but on site, it looked maybe likely that, or a possibility that the water main had froze. Um. I really, I really don't think that was the case, based on the temperatures. Based on the pipe being, the pipe that we put in being gasketed, um. Based on what we found, that I don't, it didn't, I don't think it froze. Um so then, you ask yourself, okay, they did the project, they they put that pipe in, in that stretch. In June, you know, in early to mid-June, I think, I think uh it was either, it was in the teens of June. Uh when they actually did that, uh crossed underneath the water main, um. And so the leak showed up over five months after, after the project was over, basically. Uh and it, you know, that was one other thing, it looked, okay, when the weather started to get colder, now it's starting to leak, so maybe it was a freezing issue, but. Um that's not, despite it maybe looking like that on site, the more that I thought about it, and the more. The information that I gathered, basically, the conclusion was is that it, it didn't freeze, um so then. Okay, it leaked, and is there something that we can say that the contractor did wrong? That would validate a warranty claim, and essentially, where I'm at is, I don't think there is. Um something that you can say the contractor did. You can point at something that they did negligent or wrong that would have caused that. And I think the other thing to to point out is that, when you pro, when you expose these. Old decades-old water mains, and particularly when you, like, we crossed underneath it with this, with this district tile. Um. In in my experience, you could do everything right. And it's not com- not completely unheard of, it's not uncommon for there to be a leak that shows up over the next year or two. Um for a variety of different reasons, so I guess where, where I boiled it down to is, okay, it was in the trench. And it's sound, it's it's reasonable to say that it had something to do with. The project, the the process of exposing it and digging underneath it and putting the pipe in. But can we say with any level of confidence that it was caused by? A contractor error or or negligence, I don't believe that. Is the case, I don't think there's enough evidence to say that. But being that it was in the trench, I don't think it's something that we can say either, that Al, that the project had nothing to do with this. And so we think, like, I'm not saying that the city should just get that bill from the contractor. Um basically, the conclusion I had was. The process of crossing it, and even if you did everything right, it's still probably. Based on the evidence, had something to do with a leak starting there. Um and so I guess my, my recommendation was to have the drainage district pay for the repair cost. As part of, of the tile project. Um I I will say a couple, a couple things, I think. To the city, I. Some of this stuff, I think it got a little bit out of control on the back and forth, and I do wish we would have been able to have. Discussions, and maybe I think some of this stuff could have been addressed, like the. The the letter that that you wrote Brad about. You know, how the repair was gone about, I don't know how much you board members read of all the, all this stuff, but. Uh basically, there, there was a discussion from Brad in his letter that. Either way that the repair was approached caused extra time, extra cost. So that bill essentially ended up being larger, in his opinion, because of how the repair was gone about. Um and one thing I would say to that is like, when, when the contractor got there. They didn't just make a plan and start digging, um we had a discussion about it, myself and the contractor about, okay, what's. What's a reasonable way of, of going about this? And obviously, we, you know, the goal was to find the leak and repair it, while causing minimal. Minimal damage, particularly to the road, we had to dig up the road to to get at, at this water main. Um and being it was in the northeast corner of the intersection, not very far from the edge of the pavement. And knowing that the the sonar detection thing is accurate, I mean, what you were saying, at two to five feet in either direction. Um Chris Doyle had, he could hear the leak when he put his ear on the, on the fire hydrant, which is right in that. The northeast corner of that intersection, so those things made it seem like, okay, let's, let's start. Let's start on this side of it and not cut out further into the road than we need to to start. And um at the time.
And that was over asphalt anyways, right, so where the, where it was marked leak, was the old asphalt.
No, it was, the where mar- was marked leak was right on the cut line, basically, and so we. Basically, it was, okay, let's start by not cutting into that patch. Let's go on the east side and try to keep that patch there, if, you know, if we can find the leak there, and I I think another thing that. Was a problem is that we didn't know how thick the, the frost was gonna be, and obvi- that was obvious, that that took a lot of extra time. Because the excavator wasn't able to dig through the frost.
My question, you, did the contractor dig in the right spot to begin with?
We dug over the spot, I said, you leave.
No, you did not.
No, you did not, no.
The first cut was on the new and old asphalt. At nine feet to the east. The leak was marked about eighteen inches west of that, and there still is a blue mark on the new asphalt. That was directly south of where the leak was here.
Yeah, so being that said, the employees, we got, I have seen it in plenty. There's a lot more work that was involved for not digging in the right spot to begin with, rock, labor. So I.
The trench at the bottom was from ban to the edge of our other trench. Cuz the leak was offset of the pipe, right?
Yeah, it was offset.
Like pictures show, like where they started digging, they found a leak over here, yeah, I'm sure they probably pulled. Maybe they pulled more pavement out than they needed to, I think that may be what we're talking about.
Well, yeah, and my, so my thought on that was. They, they needed a spot to dig a trench in parallel with the water main, and they were, I mean. You needed some space to to get in there anyways, and so going to the edge of the pavement didn't seem excessive. And eh, you know, in in talking, and I don't have to speak for Doyle, but. There was no discussion with myself, and it was Jason that was out there that I was, I was talking with, about how to to go about it. There was, there was definitely nothing in my mind about, let's try to prove that it was. The city first or something like that, or try to find it over here so that. That the city has to pay for it, and I didn't get any indication that there, that was the, the feeling of the contractor either. Now hindsight, obviously, if if we look at that, where it could, the actual leak was found probably five to six feet. On the other side of that, where that mark was at, so it could have easily been five to six feet on this side, and. We're trying not to take any more pavement than we have to. Um and and that's the edge of the road on that side, so eh to me, it it was a logical way of going about. Um trying to locate the leak, eh, I mean, it's, it's easier to. To argue with that after the fact, because the actual leak was found, you know, six feet the other direction of the mark. Um and and I'll, I'll admit, that did, you know, digging on the other side, obviously, that caused more excavation to be needed. And more time, and more rock needed to be.
So was that the right thing to do?
In hindsight, I'd say no, but we didn't know exactly where the leak was, we had a mark. But it could be.
How, how, can you give me some information on the leak?
I mean, like I said before, you know, this is a professional that came out, it's not just some, you know, Joe Schmo. And I had said, every leak, this is the tenth leak he's found in two years, and he has been within five feet roughly of a leak. Every single time. So if we would have started over the mark and gone. Two, three feet in either direction to give us a starting location, that would have been the logical. It's like, okay, this is where he has the mark, let's go. Three, four feet this way, three, four feet that way, and we would have found that the dirt was dry on one side. If the dirt's dry, you know there's not a leak there. And I, that was one of my first comments to you when I came up. That isn't it convenient that everything is getting cut to the east, not over the mark, the mark was still. Blue circle with the X through it, line off to the south, it says leak, was still hundred percent visible when I got there. So they didn't even start, now whose decision that was, I don't know.
Right.
I was not able to be there, obviously, there's only two of us in the city.
Yeah.
And, you know, we do have other things that we have to do. So, I mean, that was one of my biggest concerns on that one was, it wasn't even started over the mark. So to me, it felt like, well, somebody's trying to prove that it was in Dakota City's responsibility first.
How that didn't matter, we were gonna find it either way.
I know you're gonna find it, but one, one's a logical thing to start over the mark where a professional put, put the mark. That has been the logical.
Yes, and.
I mean, that's.
It doesn't really matter, we bad filled that area with dirt anyway, we had a little bit of dry dirt, you were there, you saw it, so. To say that we use exorbitant rock or labor or anything, it just takes time for water leaks, like, I mean, how often do you guys have water leaks?
Well, I mean.
And how much times does it take?
Big ones like this. Not that often, I mean, we've had, this is the second main that we've had in the two years that I've been here.
Yeah.
Uh most of the time, it's gonna be valves, it's gonna be curb stops, you know, smaller stuff. Also typically, we don't wanna dig during the winter because we know the costs are a lot higher because you're trying to.
Gotta get a breaker out there, get a skid builder, get extra equipment, get extra labor.
So I mean, we have a season that we prefer to dig in, but, you know, obviously, this is a water main.
Yeah.
And, you know, four-inch line separates like that, we would have been in a boil order by this point in time. I mean, after seeing that leak, where that pipe was cracked halfway around, it was just a matter of time before it cheered.
So yeah, when I was looking at it, they did dig a little bit farther, took out some of the pavement, you know. I don't know what was said before I got there, but, you know, the, the, the leak was banded. And we had like a eighteen-inch or two-foot ban, it was, yeah, it's three, big ban, and then we wanted to get over top of the pipe too, to check everything, so.
Once I got there, I'm not, I'm not arguing anything over, once we got there, or the way the repair was. But my first, my first point, when I showed up on that project at eight-thirty, nine o'clock, whatever. Was, it weren't even over the mark.
Yeah.
That, to me, should have been the first place that we dug is over the mark. Cuz that's where a professional that does this every day. He found it, he located with a lot more expensive equipment than what the city got for it.
Okay, so are we asking for a reduction in the bill, or?
Right now, I'm just.
What we talking about?
You know, after we got the proposal, the recommendation proposal. I felt something needed to be said of everything that's going on. You know, it's not like I'm trying to start a fight or an argument or anything, I'm just trying to bring up the discussion of. If we're gonna put everything in here, you know, and I understand the warranty claim, but the one thing we haven't got to is. Was this an engineering fault? I mean, you agreed and you agreed out in the field, there should have been at least sixteen inches. I sent out to code, I had our engineer find the code, it's eighteen inches. You measured it off with a level coming off the pipe and measured thirteen and a half. If you go into the ass builds it, uh Jacobson Westergaard sent out. There isn't a shot directly over each one, but if you do the math, the GPS comes out at like twelve. Six, eight or something like that. So no, there was not enough separation in between those pipes, there is not a code that says adding insulation. Helps expand that. Distance in between them, but it is a practice that most excavation companies do use. It wasn't there to begin with, it was refield engineered out there, we ended up adding the. Installation after the fact, cuz it wasn't there to begin with. So. Is there a fault there that? So is there a fault there that a wrong shot was taken, used? I'm not saying it's on you, I'm not saying it's on you, but we also have to look at the aspect that there is an engineering fault. Or design fault, that there was enough separation between two pipes that are non-compatible.
You would either had to dig the main deeper or the water went higher up to get the separation.
No, you have to off, no, the water main would have to go under because. You know, set height that you tied into for the structure to the north. And then there's hardly any fall in that pipe anyway, so that pretty much worked, the storm sewer was pretty much where it needed to be. If you were gonna do it, then it would be extra money to do a forty-five, 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 forty-five. But then you might get other util- utilities in there anyways, cause you have sewer running the stream, so.
So I, I can address a, a couple of things with that specifically. So I guess, one, one thing I just wanna make sure is that, when we're, we're talking about is. The water main started leaking and we have a bill. From Doyle Construction um, for that repair. And so. I get what you're saying about the separation and stuff, but if those two aren't connected, they're separate issues, which. In, in my opinion, they are separate issues, that separation wasn't related to whether or not a leak was caused. But on that, on the separation itself and what the standards stay, say. The D N R has, they sent out a letter. In May of twenty twenty-four regarding that specific topic, and I don't have tons of copies of this. But. You can share a couple of them. Basically. On the back there, it, it talks about separation of water mains and storm sewers. It's, there's a table on the back page. Let's see here. It's the ba- it's actually the last table, vertical separation of crossings of gravity storm sewers. Uh, and water mains. And so if you. If you're between six and eighteen inches, so let's say you can't get the eighteen inches of, of separation, that is ideal. Um, if you're between six and eighteen inches, you have four different options on different ways to basically add. Add additional protection um, to make it allowable. And if you look at option number four there, reinforced concrete pipe storm sewer shall be constructed with gaskets. Manufactured in accordance with A S T M C four, four, three. The, the R C P storm sewer that was put in was gasketed. So basically what this is saying is if we're within six, you know, if we're greater than six, between, between six and eighteen inches of vertical separation. If, and the water main is on top of the storm sewer, if you gasket. The, the concrete pipe, you're covered. And that's, that's, that's what we did. So as far as that goes, I know there's ten state standards that say that stuff, the D N R. Address, is addressing this specific topic uh, in a May twen- May twenty twenty-four um, frequently asked questions letter. And I've got, I think, this to anybody else too.
So who takes precedence? The Iowa Code of Ten State Standards or D N Rs?
Well, when you try to get a permit to do a water main construction. You have to get a permit from Iowa D N R.
This wasn't a water main construction.
I, okay.
I mean, you weren't.
The, the, the ten state standards aren't, aren't a law though. And this is what the, this is the D N. That's, that's.
Cause I sent out the Iowa code too, and it says the exact same thing.
The Iowa Administrative Code, that's, that's different than state law, it's administrative code. But. I mean, the D N R is the one that has the, that basically. Implementing that administrative code and they have the, these tables right here that say, this is a common thing. And if. If you have a water main over a storm sewer. And you can't get that eighteen inches, as long as you're more than six and you gasket the reinforced concrete pipe storm sewer, you're fine. And that's what we did. So to me, if, if you wanna talk about an engineering deficiency on the, on the water main crossing, there isn't one. But regardless, I don't wanna make it about that either because I, I don't think that's connected to the actual leak itself. But if we wanna have that discussion, that's, that, that's my stance on it. So I, I guess, a que- a question maybe I would have for this, for the city, cause I know there, and. The, the other thing too, I guess Brad, in your letter that you said is that. On the site, you said, I said that the city wouldn't be held responsible. And I did say that, but I had no. I had no way meant that the drain, I wouldn't end up recommending that the drainage district pay for it, which is a separate thing. What I meant, and I meant it, was that I wouldn't be, I for sure wouldn't be recommending, I didn't see any scenario that. I would recommend that this, that this just be the city's cost to pay the repair.
But your recommendation was to put it onto the project, which the city is the largest landowner. And so therefore the city is absorbing the majority of the cost of this repair.
So.
Being stool.
Yeah, and the other landowners in the drainage district that are part of this project. So I, I guess. Maybe that was a misunderstanding, um, but. That's not something that I committed to, that the, the, the drainage district, like it's a pass through cost, I get that. I'm not, I'm not. Saying that, oh, just cause the drainage district, that doesn't mean the city doesn't pay some of that. I, I, I acknowledge that. But I did, I didn't say that the city should just pay the bill, and that's, that's what I meant on that day. I apologize if there's misunderstanding.
I asked you multiple times while we were here and on our phone call that we had after the fact. When you were on your way home and after you had gone through Boca Hines. And we had another discussion, now, and I asked point blank. Is there any way that this would fall on the city? We said no. And now it's, a majority of it is falling on the city.
Yeah, I, I, that's, that's, that's a misunderstanding. I, I, I didn't, I didn't mean to, to imply that. The drainage district wouldn't end up absorbing this cost. When, when I started, you know, there's three different options that I could see for paying for this water main repair. The contractor has a warranty claim, the city, if it's not related to the project. And the drainage district, if it's related to the project, but you can't. You can't say that a warranty claim is valid. And that's where I ended up was that third option. But eh, you know, that's just, that's a misunderstanding and I apologize for that.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Further knowing from where the leak was. Did we cross any water mains going to, or uh, services going to houses over there?
From where this leak was to.
I don't think so.
Where we tied in.
Yeah, where we tied in further north. I'm just curious to know if there was a house service or something that was leaking, who would, who would pick up that, the homeowner?
Hey sewer main that, or the sewer line. To the house that's on this same corner, had to be re-engineered to get.
Offset, yeah.
Offset and then uh, come in thirty or forty-five degree. To get over and then drop back down into the sewer.
I'm just curious if, if there was a leak that developed next month. It's still within the year timeframe, um, who would, who would pick up that? The homeowner or the?
Think that the, so that water line comes across there. I think that was the only water service or water at all that was in that trench, cause I think that corner house comes off.
The other direction?
From, I think, that's right. I, I don't, I don't.
They, well, they get their water from the same line that we just prepared, so they get their water. And that's the sewer line that had to be manufactured.
Okay.
How, how long is the warranty? The, the drainage dis- covers where damages, this is five months after the fact, and that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point. I mean. There's a warranty on the contractor's work for a year.
But there's nothing.
There, there's, there's nothing that specifically addresses this scenario. Because again, in, in my opinion, I don't think we can. We can call this a, a contractor warranty claim. That, that's my opinion on it. If we can't, if it happened five months after, and I, I've talked about all that, but. Um, so it's, it's really a separate issue, and I think we would have to take that a case at a time. But at, at some point, it's. It's the city's water main and the water system. And if. You know, if in the future there's something got dug up and you could show that there was uh, within that year period, that there was negligence or. Something wrong that the contractor did, then yes, it would, it would be a warranty claim on the contractor. But you, you know, this specific thing, it's really hard to prove one way or another exactly what happened, or if there's somebody at fault. Um, it's really, it doesn't fall under that one year warranty thing. So at some point. Um, the drains district would say, well, it's the city's water system and. You know, it's their responsibility to, to maintain their system.
How often do these pipes have to expose them? Out of, say ten, out of ten pipes you expose and cover back up, how many of them break? Just give me a number.
That's a good, I, I honestly don't have enough experience to, to say. Like I haven't done hundreds of these, but um, in my career in crossing water mains, probably in. I don't know, three, four, or five towns, this is this, this is the second time it's happened.
So there's a twenty percent chance that if you don't replace that section that you exposed while you haven't exposed.
Yeah, I, I'd say on the, on the whole, it's gonna be less than, less than twenty percent. Uh, there's other factors that make a difference, obviously, the, the material of the, and the age of the, of the water main. Like if it was sand cast, that's, oh, that stuff is brittle and it. I think if, if we knew it was sand cast, you'd probably just replace it when you, when you're doing it, because.
Touch the obvious question, cause it would've been cheaper to cut that chunk out and replace it, where you had it exposed and re-dig it up and put a band on it. I mean, that's, that's the point I'm trying to.
But the other side point is, is when you had. The digging conditions at the beginning, it was harder than hell. The ground, right? When, had rained forever, right?
Well, actually.
Then it rained like crazy when it was exposed. Or did it happen after you, the rain came after?
It actually was almost identical.
Almost when they were starting.
But I thought we dug it started.
It started raining.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to figure out the way that, you know, if, if the, the ground was really hard and we're digging and you're, you're pulling that hard dirt. You could bump that, moving it.
Moving dirt around.
What's that?
They backed around everything first to find all the utilities.
Right. And we, and that was one thing we wanted to do is to, to make sure we knew where the water main was at and the elevation of it for. That, that was like one of the first things we did for the project before they even started digging is to find the, where, the elevation of that water main. So they did pothole it. And uncover.
And then back to your other question, you said the intake, the distance from, from the leak, that intake on the south side of that street. You said something about freezing, we aren't gonna have another issue with that if it gets cold the rest of the winter. That, that's a, distance is far enough that it isn't gonna. Like you talked in the email, if somebody did, we aren't gonna have air coming up there freezing?
It, when I went down there and sucked my hand the other day when it was way cold.
It's six degrees, water's running down the side of the cash basis.
It's warm, I said, but it's warm up on any of there.
Alright.
And it's, and the pipes are gasketed and we did, you know, the contractor did as part of it. Put some insulation between, um, just as an insurance policy while we had it open. Um, put some insulation between the pipes to try to. If there was any chance of that happening, to try to make it that much harder for the pipe to freeze.
Okay. So, I mean, we could sit here the rest of the afternoon.
Yeah.
Debating this, but I'm. What was the, the total was like four thousand and?
Four thousand five hundred.
Four thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
And I, and I guess my question is, is. I don't like to see the, the uh, people. That are paying for it have to take the brunt of this either. And it, it's unfortunate, it would have been nice if it would have been out in the middle of that. Uh, baseball area and we uh, popped something out there that we wouldn't have to dig up the street. That somebody's gonna have to repair the street again.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're, they're already, so I guess that's my question. Is there a middle of the road? Are we, is anybody willing to go to the middle of the road, so to speak?
What kind of bill are we looking at now from Jacob Sebastian Gray?
Uh, I don't have that, probably. It's probably in the range of a couple thousand, the, the accrued.
For this current?
We haven't, obviously submitted an invoice.
For you, for what? From this?
From, from the water main leak. What's it gonna cost to pave that, patch that back in again? Um, I haven't talked with Blacktop Service, but. I wouldn't think, and I don't, Brad, maybe you guys can, but I was thinking probably under a thousand.
I would say probably a close number.
Like a, just use a cold patch type?
No, they would, they use.
Well, I have to wait till it's warm enough that they're running the plant.
Yep.
Yeah, we're roughly up seven thousand bucks right there.
Anybody willing to cut expenses?
I would be able to, yeah, I would take a little bit of labor off for you guys, just to get common ground.
Okay, I'll, I'll, much labor, any rock, any rock included or anything, I mean. Cause you gotta bill over there. Knock out. After the labor? Now, of the labor?
Is that around fifteen hundred?
That's more than half, isn't it? The dump truck operator skilled labor foreman, those, those three items and that totals twenty. Three point four hundred.
I'm just trying to help everybody out here, but everybody's. Kind of in the gray area where they made a mistake. We all make mistakes. And I guess this will be a learning lesson on everybody.
Well, just to keep good relationships.
Yeah, no, I did, yeah, absolutely.
Well, we appreciate the fact that you came back in, in a timely math. Cause they were losing, I don't know how many thousand gallons a day or whatever. So we got the, we got it fixed before. It got fifty degrees this week. But unfortunately, they could have went the other direction just as fast. So if we can come to some common ground, I, I would surely applaud. Shake everybody's hand and say, we'll move forward.
Yeah, cause I just wanna keep good relationships with everybody, cause we like working with the city and everybody is.
Even with Brad?
Yeah, he's great, man. He's got a lot of stories.
I, I mean, that's, to me, that's the easiest route. If we can come to an agreement, then.
Would you do an encounter?
Yeah, so I was thinking about that and. You know, obviously, we're just like Doyle Constru- I mean, we're a private firm that. Has things set up to make a profit, it's a business.
Yep.
And because of it's, it's an un- unfortunate situation, um, I think we could take ten percent, ten percent off our bill.
What was it, Bill?
What was his bill?
We, yeah, we haven't sent a bill, so you'll see that when the invoice comes.
So Doyle's willing to take, I'm just writing this down, cause I'm gonna hand this over to Rick as soon as he gets back. I might meet him at the airport. Ten percent off of the, of the, uh. Jacobson's bill, and you said how much? Fifteen hundred, do I hear two thousand? I'm teasing you. How about you guys, does that, does that sound workable to? I mean, basically, all of the, everybody else in the project is gonna, is picking up the bill, but it wouldn't have been any different if it would've been. Eight months, you know, the beginning of next January, that thing pops, then we'd have, had to have the whole thing. And I'm sorry, talking to you guys, so it's unfortunate. And I guess it's a learning experience for all of us to say, don't let them start digging on your. Water main before you, somebody gets there and says, this is where the whole, this is where he guaranteed.
He's not blaming.
You know, I, I don't wanna cause a fight.
Right.
But, I mean, obviously, this was a proposal that we need to.
Yep, resolve.
Resolve and talk through, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah. I, like, Bruce and I both said, it's, it's a good learning experience for everyone.
It's just hard because there's no clear, like, I mean, if it would've been my fault, I'd pay for it in a New York minute, right? But like, the way that thing was split off the side, if it froze, it freeze right in the middle, you know what I mean? It would, you'd think it would split right over top of the pipe and not two foot one way or the other. So, when we were there, I was just like, I don't know what the deal is, so I don't, I couldn't tell you why. I mean, we dig around water mains all the time.
Right.
We did Hawkeye Avenue by Amigos, I dug, we dug around sixteen inch water mains, twelve inch, four inch, and we never had anything like that happen.
Well, we haven't had any rain since you dug, so maybe we're gonna send you out and dig a hole somewhere to get some moisture back or something, but.
You guys may like rain.
Well, at this time of year's weather, we'll take whatever we can get, but anyway. I, i- is that doable for ten percent for Jacobson and, and a hundred or fifteen hundred from Doyle? You guys comfortable? I'm guessing the least.
Percent of our bill.
Yeah, ten percent of his bill, which is pretty much.
We're, 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 we're basically knocking off the profit.
But no.
So basically, we're doing this at, this, handling this part of it, doing it at cost. You know?
Hey. That works. That work?
You guys okay with that? I mean, we all need to get along and work together, that's what we're here for.
We just have, now the discussion's over.
Yeah, right, and I'm sure it'll happen again someday, hopefully not in this scenario, but I'm saying you, we'll be digging again sometime, so. Understanding that if there's a mark, that's where you start. And Brad, I'm sure you were there, or someone was there at the time of when it starts, which should happen from now on. And it's my district, I just got on, I'm new at this.
We're blaming you then.
Um, but I do wanna, and, and Brad, if anything happens in my district, I do wanna know immediately. And if I need to be there when they start digging to make sure, you know, I'll work with you too, so.
Appreciate it. So we're in agreement of the ten percent and the fifteen hundred, we need to have a handshake, a. Hug, group hug, I mean, we can do a group hug. I don't know if Kim wants to start with, over in this area, but as long as we're in agreement, oh, we're good.
So, so for the. As far as board action, I mean, really, the, the thing is, we've got Doyle's bill. And if the drainage district is gonna pay that, you, you would need to, you would wanna make a motion to approve. You know, whatever, fifteen hundred off of this invoice to have the drains district pay now.
Well, how can we make a motion to mend or to approve something when your bill isn't even in yet? We just do this one on.
I mean.
I, I'm just asking.
And I can wait too, it's not that big of a deal.
Do you just wanna make, put it on the agenda to do it all at once, when, when would you have your billing?
Well, we typically do, uh, well. End of the month, I mean, once the month is over.
Getting towards the end of the month.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be too long.
So we could have it on the first February then, right?
That's fine, we could just not take, not take any of the.
Action today, right. Christ, we wouldn't even have to meet, we had, pulled half of our.
Yeah.
Agenda off and Rick will think we've been. Taking the, the whole week off, but if that works, then, then we'll just put it on for the, for next week or the, whenever the bill comes in.
Yeah.
That works for you guys, it's perfect, we appreciate all of the.
Thank you.
Everybody's effort and trying to get this put together.
Yeah, and I, one, I'll say one thing at the end here. Obviously, we didn't want any water main leak to happen, it's unfortunate that it did. But, um, you know, overall, this project, I feel like it was a good project and I. I feel like we worked well together, um, I appreciate the city. Um, and, and all their effort and, and cooperation and making it a successful project, so this. You never wanna see stuff like this at the end, when you have a, a good project that's doing a lot of good. And then something like this to tarnish it, but I, I do just wanna point that out that I, you know, I, I feel like it was a good project. And appreciate everybody's cooperation and, and, and help throughout.
Perfect, perfect, that'll work, we thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
What's that? Yeah, we don't have anything else in, in drainage, are you, you ain't hearing from anybody, so. Alright, with that, I'd entertain a motion to go out of drainage then. No, I don't, I'm not making a motion, I'm looking for one.
I'll make a one.
We have a motion and a second to go out of drainage at, uh, nine fifty-one. Alright. And I think we got through all of our.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, got through all of our agenda, anybody else have anything for the, the cause? Suzie, you did know that we put you on last week for, uh, what you agreed to serve?
Any cause.
No, no, we won't do anything. You agreed, I, I heard it, I, I heard. Alright, if nothing else, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-two.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Uh, both same side, motion carries, thank you all.
Thank you.